I think I saw her actually walk.
Okay, Joe.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. I forgot how to turn off my video. I go ahead and do that, but.
All right. You hit the off button, Bob.
Me got over quickly?
Yes.
All right, I will go ahead and then call the study session for certain rates to order. And we will go ahead and have a presentation here from staff on tax abatement. Before we get started, I do want to, I do want to say a couple of things quickly here. I'm sorry, Jackie.
You're all right.
Yeah. We, uh, plan here is if anybody wants to speak after we go through the presentation and after council, have some discussion, if there's anyone that wants to speak, we'll give opportunities for that. And then we can give staff some direction after the whole.
I'm good. Mayor and council, Indianola has an urban revitalization plan, which includes tax abatements to encourage economic development and revitalization in our community. Our current tax abatement program was started in 1989 and has gone through many changes over the years. The current program was amended in 2018. The tax abatement eligibility requirement is to have improved value of at least 10% of the prior assessed value. This can be for new construction, rehabilitations, or additions. The abatement amounts are for a percentage of the actual value added by eligible improvements. Our current program has a sliding scale over the abatement years for residential, commercial, and industrial abatements. The current program is used to encourage growth or rehabilitation, which might not have otherwise have occurred, increases tax base for all tax entities, helps stabilize or improve home values, and stimulates investment from the private sector. In an analysis of our program, we determined that there's an average of 50 new home building permits eligible for rebates in a given year. In our scenario, the homes are valued at $350,000 each year over 10 years. The city would collect $456,843 in property tax revenue over 10 years from these 50 homes receiving a five-year abatement. If we eliminated this program and assume that causes a 20% drop in homes being built, we would collect $522,106 in property taxes over 10 years on 40 homes. In this scenario, eliminating the tax abatement program would generate 65,000 more in property taxes over 10 years, or $6,500 a year. Of course, there are many factors that lead to an increase or decrease in the number of homes being built. The best-case scenario, if ending the program did not cause a decline in new homes being built, and all other factors remain the same, we could expect $195,790 more in property tax revenue. A single-family home valued at $350,000 will pay $9,000 into the general fund over 10 years if they receive a five-year tax abatement. If they do not have a tax abatement, they will pay $13,000 over 10 years, a difference of about $4,000. Nine metro communities plus the city of Indianola offer a residential abatement program. While most offer abatement for the full value of the home or improvements, some choose to offer an abatement only on a portion of the home's value. Carlisle only offers an abatement on renovations and improvements of residential homes, and West Des Moines only offers it to those homes that are annexed into the city. Thirteen metro communities, including Norwalk, do not offer a residential abatement program. Norwalk stated they have not seen a decrease of homes being built and stated other attributes of their community as a reason home building is growing. We can, we also offer industrial and commercial tax abatements as an economic development tool and to lower TIF usage. These abatements incentivize development, encourage rehabilitation, and they allow TIF to be used for larger-scale projects. There, um, these are the metro communities with industrial and/or commercial tax abatements. Like Indianola, most of these abatements are done over a five-year sliding scale. Indianola uses TIF to encourage economic development, enhance industrial and commercial property tax base, create employment opportunities, and attract businesses that contribute to the general well-being and quality of life of Indianola's residents. The increased tax revenue on developed land in a TIF district can be used by the city to pay for infrastructure improvements or as a rebate to the developer. Indianola policy requires the owner or developer to waive other forms of property tax abatement. In Indianola, all residential properties are explicitly excluded from receiving TIF funds unless the city council finds that such development will further a public purpose of the city. Development agreements under TIF or tax abatements on commercial industrial properties encourage economic development and increase land value. For example, when the YMCA was built, the land was undeveloped. Today, the valuation in that area is more than $50 million. Both TIF and tax abatements have encouraged commercial growth in that area in addition to the residential growth. This example shows a $6 million commercial property. If it had a tax abatement, we'd collect almost $340,000 over 10 years. If we used a TIF in a development agreement, it would collect 1.6 million over 10 years. That revenue would be used to pay back debt that the city has incurred, either through a development agreement or paying a bond for infrastructure work on or around the property. Once that debt is repaid, the property taxes are not collected through TIF. Instead, they go back into the general fund and to the other taxing entities. There are several metro communities utilizing TIF. They use it as an economic development tool to support commercial and industrial development and infrastructure projects. For example, Ames uses it, um, for large-scale projects, and Ankeny uses the rebates only for targeted industries. All these communities generally never use TIF for residential projects. This is the staff recommendation, to end the residential tax abatement, keep industrial and commercial tax abatements, and continue using TIF to attract businesses. Ending the residential tax abatement requires council to determine that we have reached our desired level of residential revitalization and that continuing the program would cease to be a benefit to the city. Any current tax abatements will continue until their expiration. The council should set an effective date so that any projects in the works can still be completed and owners can apply for the exemption before it is repealed. Determining that effective date depends on how much lead time the council wants to provide. With this construction season winding down and plans already being made for 2026, staff recommends to adopt a repealing ordinance this fall with an effective date of March 15th, 2027. That way homeowners can apply by the February 1st deadline in 2027, and staff can forward all the approved exemptions to the county by March 1st of 2027. The city needs to retain economic development tools to support the development and/or expansion of commercial and industrial businesses. Staff recommends keeping the tax abatement program for commercial and industrial abatements. Staff would welcome discussion and direction at this time from the council on our tax abatement program.
Thank you, Jackie. Steve, you're kind of the one that wanted to move this forward a little bit, talk about it, so why don't you go ahead and start us off here and we'll go from there.
Sure. Thanks, Jackie. I 100% agree with the staff recommendation. And I know we've heard from some people about trying to keep the residential tax abatement. And quite frankly, the people I heard from are people who are going to directly benefit from keeping it. The thought of people will take their growth to Norwalk and Carlisle, I think the presentation shows why. They're not going to get tax abatement at Norwalk or Carlisle for a new, new build either. They're not going to get it, quite frankly, in a whole lot of places in the metro. So I think ending that is a great first step. I think the other two, keeping those make a lot of sense to me as well. My, my thought here too is, on the residential side, I know, I know ours is tiered. But I don't want to provide 20% services for EMS and police. School doesn't provide 20% education services. I don't tier that. We have to provide full services regardless if we're bringing in 100% of their property taxes or not. So it is a financial strain on us. I think there was a time and a place for residential property tax abatement, and I don't think it's the time or the place anymore with the current legislation at the state. So I would be in favor of all of the staff recommendations that you provided.
Jackie, could you run through those, those tax numbers again with and without abatements? I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to listen attentively and then start throwing numbers out and I.
So if we had 50 new homes valued at $350,000, we would collect $456,843 over 10 years.
With, with the abatement?
And if that dropped 20%, so we only had 40 homes being built, we would collect $522,106 with no abatement. But if we didn't see a change in those values, we could get 195,790 more.
So is there any concern with, um, the House File 718 with us being penalized for, for growth, right? So the more we grow, the more we get penalized?
So your abated is already counted in your taxable valuation? So you're growing and you're not collecting property taxes and it's used in your penalty? So the extra collection isn't hurting you? It's the actual growth and non-collecting that hurts you.
They're penalizing you for providing the benefit of abatement?
Jackie?
Yes.
This is Bob. Could you, the 20% when you, when you picked a number of, of decrease? How did you all arrive at that number?
We use, um, Michael Maloney, our financial analyst, ran these figures for us and he just did 20% worst-case scenario, so.
Okay, I, I just didn't know if I missed something in there.
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Was, was he saying that this was like our, I don't want to say break even, but kind of our tipping point? We lost?
No.
Or went below 40?
No, he just did 20% decrease.
Okay.
And there are so many factors that go into why people build homes, so.
Yep. I mean, the market controls the.
Right, interest rates, all of those kinds of things, yes.
So abatement's just one part of it?
This is something too, we've talked at the staff level that if we eliminate it and find that maybe this was a big driving factor in the decrease in homes, we can always reinstitute it.
Some point on the, um, point. I, just by accident, I was out looking at some homes that were for sale and noticed that there are several homes on the market right now that their abatement is just newly up. So they're facing the full tax payment this coming year. And I know that, um, I personally know several people who have gone from home to home to get a new abatement. And, and it's allowing them to upgrade and go to a higher-priced home. While that's good, um, it, it's not good for us if they're just avoiding taxes. Yes, that home goes on the tax roll for the next buyer. So it, you know, we're collecting the tax revenue essentially. The thought of one person getting abatement after abatement is, seems kind of wrong to me. I know there are communities that limit you to receiving an abatement one time.
I'm going to correct one thing on something that was just said here. And again, I am neutral on this, but, um, I don't think House File 718 penalizes this for benefit of abatement. House File 718 penalizes local governments on your growth percentage. And if you're not at a certain point in your growth percentage, then you're penalized on that. So for instance, if you have 3% growth, you bump back 2%, so you actually only have 1% growth. If you're 3% to 6%, then you're still going to be bumped back. So if you fall in that 3% to 4% range, you're in that category though where you're still going to have that 2% bump, and that puts you down into about 2% growth. So whatever you grow with this, whether it's building a homes, whether or not you give abatement or not, you're still penalized through House File 718 for that growth. So you get above 6%, is that 3% Jackie? Do you remember? I think it's still 2%. I think it's still 2%. So once you get to that 6% growth factor in your city, then, then you're starting to actually collect 4% plus in that particular category. So, um, it's all about the growth and how much you grow. The problem we've had here is that we're just barely over 3% and so we get bumped back, which leads to some of the questions you folks have about abatement. There's no doubt about that. But on the other side of that, the long-term factor of that house on the tax rolls too then is part of that too. It may, if it doesn't get built, we're not going to have that on, on the rolls either, so. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. And would you back up to that second slide for a minute here? And I want to, just want to.
Clarifying that?
Yeah, you're welcome. No. I, I want to point out that 92, 93 were tough economic years. And so there were some changes the council made at that point in time to try to also incentivize people to build homes and move forward. And then, um, was there nothing done? I was thinking there was something done in 2007 or '08, but you didn't find anything on that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
2004's went, yeah, it was the 75,000 per year.
Right, 2000 went on a three-year schedule. Sustainable residential on a five-year schedule and commercial on a four-year schedule. I do remember that, so.
2010 was another.
Yeah.
Or you.
Yeah, well, that whole period from basically eight to 10 was recovering, no doubt about it. So in, in one of the discussions I had with, with a former realtor today, and I, I think it still bears some fruit, is that, you know, we could do something here and housing market tanks based on interest rates, and I think Steve or somebody alluded to that here as well. We could do away with it and, and interest rates drop and people start selling homes and building homes and doing things there too. So I, I really think it's the economy as much as it is in anything because in conversations with staff today, how do you get statistics to really determine whether or not abatement drives housing? And how do you get statistics or whether it's the economy? I mean, which one is it? I mean, it's like the chicken and egg thing. So I mean, it's a lot of factors there, but I just, I want to back up to that one there too and just kind of just see that again. I went through it kind of quickly and I didn't get to see all of it.
So I would like to clarify, I don't think we were any, we were saying that abatement was the penalty. The growth is the penalty, but your abatement is counted in your growth.
That's correct.
So I, I think that is the clarifying point. The abatement is still counted in the growth. So you are being penal, penalized still on things you're being.
Is that slide from what?
Oh, no, this is just in.
No, is that one there you got there? Is that the one?
It's, no, it wasn't this.
It wasn't mine, I didn't see it, okay.
So I just want to clarify that, that you're not being penalized for abatement, but the abatement is counted in your growth, which isn't a penalty. So we're not collecting the taxes on something that is being used in our penalty.
Right. Okay. Council members, other ones?
So another thing that crossed my mind is what if we were to look at the housing study that was done and target the the areas that we need, um, which is condos and townhomes? And focus our abatements around those areas?
Sorry, you're saying modify the current?
Abatement. To target the areas of need, most need, based on the survey that was conducted? I'm just throwing out ideas. Um, I've gotten calls from people who are against it and people who want to keep it. My phone's been ringing all day long, yesterday and today. Can attest in a one-hour meeting, my phone rang many times today.
I have to check with legal counsel on if we can do targeted residential abatement, if that's allowed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I forgot he was on there. Pat, do you know the answer to that?
There we go. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head. I don't know. I'm pretty sure I have seen that, but I can look it up and, and give you guys an answer. But I think that you can. I think that you can tailor it to any type. It can, it does not need to be residential as a generic description. I think you can narrow it any way you see fit, but I mean, I, I would need to verify that.
Along the same lines, um, currently, I believe our whole city is considered blight.
Well, the whole city is in a revitalization area.
Revitalization. So another option would be to focus on the areas of most need of revitalization?
And that would be a more typical way to do it, yes, from a legal standpoint.
Is it Pat? Is that his name? Pat, is that who's on there? Hey, Pat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hi. You're all right.
I know the, the state did away with essentially, uh, commercial multifamily. It's mostly residential. So, uh, would residential abatements apply? If they were done to multifamily? I'm assuming they would. Is that right?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you could hear me or not. I had the same question Melissa did about, um, you know, the tailoring of it. I didn't know if that was something that could be done. The other question I have, and, and I should have probably posed this earlier, Jackie, some apologies for you to find out, but you may know. Out of all the cities that we have had on the screen tonight, do we know of any who did do away with their residential and then reinstated at any point? Do we have any, any examples of that?
No, I didn't know of any that had reinstated.
Because I've heard from just a handful of people, and I've heard from both sides of this, both, as you suggest, I think it might have been Steve Armstrong, and I apologize if I got that wrong, that said, those that might benefit from this financially, I've heard from some of those, obviously, developers and/or realtors. I've also heard from a few of those who, um, just believe that it's a way to continue to attract developers to Indianola, feeling that we are not a, a part of the metro. And I, I for one am kind of glad that we aren't. That's just my personal opinion. Unlike a, a number of those on the screen, I think, that you see right now. So, um, I just wanted to clarify because I, I've shared with all of you some data that I was trying to gather and have people share. That, that's where all that has come from.
Well, I did have one, again, just one person tell me that they bought their house and were able to do so because of abatement. I, I have had that comment. I think probably of all the ones listed there, we're most closely aligned with Adele, to be honest with you. It's a county seat town. It's about 11 miles out of Waukegan. It's a fair distance from the Des Moines area.
I think Adele just is, and I could be wrong in my memory on this, they don't have it anymore because they had a very aggressive one for a long time that bit them because it was incredibly aggressive.
Right.
And I know they're still recovering from going too.
Too aggressively.
That would be my only counterpoint to them as, as a comparable.
And I wasn't saying that we need to follow them. I'm just saying that as far as you look at communities and how they're structured, that Adele would probably be, I mean, the rest of them are darn close to metro or areas and, you know, we're anywhere from nine to 18 miles out of downtown Des Moines, nine miles to South Edgeton. And, and, um, I think Adele's kind of, kind of in that same boat, but the only reason I brought that up, yeah.
So I had two constituents call me yesterday and they were for getting rid of abatement. And the calls were interesting because while they both were able to take advantage of abatement, it was not their selling point for moving here. What sold them was the amenities, our parks, our trails, our school system, our, our square. It wasn't the abatement. And both of them were in favor of getting rid of it.
It called, been the same two people talking to me?
One of them looked at Norwalk as an alternative, and one of them looked at Waukegan, and both of them chose Indianola.
Melissa, I'm, I'm going to say I'm probably very naive, but are there really multiples of people who just jump from one abatement to another? Purchasing homes and upgrading continually?
Well, I happen to know of, of a few. Um, I don't know how often that happens.
Okay.
That would be a question for probably our real estate professionals to get a real sense of it. I just happen to know of a few.
As, as someone who hates moving, that just boggles my mind.
Right.
I just move for the last time.
Yeah. Although I, I think moving would be a good idea at this point in my life, just to get rid of some stuff.
I'm a person who has benefited from tax abatements, so I bought my house 22 years ago, close, close to 22. So, you know, a few years out of college and, and entering the workforce and buying at the time.
You're not that young, Graham.
Yeah. And buying what I thought at the time was, was a crazy large house with, it's like 225,000. And now you can't hardly buy a little ranch for 225,000. Actually, you can't actually, but, um, so the, the benefit of the tax abatement at that time was beneficial for, for a young family who knew, you know, over time my, my salary would increase. And at some point I'd be able to, you know, ma- make sure I could afford, you know, the mortgage, the PNI and, or TNI, I'm sorry. And I've got a few emails on that as well as, as, as a benefit for them and their family as well. So I totally get that. Um, I, I understand the financial aspect as well. So, so we're looking at 6,000 per year if we didn't? I mean, it, that's, it's, I mean, I don't want to poo-poo 6,000, um, but I mean, it's, it's not life-changing money, 6,000 a year. Those are just my initial thoughts off the top of my head. We just spent $3,000 last week to fix up a public restroom so that people on the, public events on the square can, can use the, the public restroom. So I mean, I, I just, I look at it 6,000 a year. Where else can we get 6,000 savings per year and keep the abatement program? But those are just my initial thoughts.
Clarifying question. Jackie, you said if we continue to grow at our current rate, didn't you say it was 195,000?
If we didn't see any drop-off in home.
Yeah, so, and that's over the course of, that's over the course of a decade, right? So in that scenario, it'd be 20,000 per year, 19,500 per year.
Well, I thought you said it would be 122,000 with no abatement, 456,000.
Drop to 40 homes a year.
Yeah, 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 I'm, yeah, with, with that drop, so we're looking. So we're looking at $66,000 over the course of a decade, so roughly $6,600 a year. What number are you coming up with, Jake? You're saying with no drop-off?
With no drop, yeah. So if we stayed, so we're averaging 50. If we were to implement no abatement, we stayed right at that 50, then you'd be at like $19,500 per year.
So if I remember right, on the last email that came out with permits being pulled, what, we were at about 37 homes?
51.
Oh, for where, 51 for the year?
I just got it right here. Okay. We're 51 homes, valued about $15 million. Six permits were issued in August.
To Jake's point, I look at it as $20,000 that we don't have to cut.
If we don't see a drop. That's the big whatever.
Or $6,000 that we don't have to cut.
Yeah, that's a big if.
And we could see a drop, just simply based on the economy as well. We just don't know.
Yeah, that's what makes this hard. I think it's, Steve Richardson said that, you know, or maybe it was you, Melissa, that we don't know if it's the economy or if it would be abatement. I mean, what, you know, what could cause that, right, or interest rates? But what, the part that Ron just talked about is also something that I wondered about a great deal. If we knew any breakdown from all those that take advantage of abatement, instead of maybe the dinosaurs like me, how many of them are young families that are adding to our community that way as far as growth? And bringing in multiple heads instead of just a couple who might be getting a townhome? Was another one I was curious about.
And how many of them stay in their home like Ron? I've been in mine for 21 or 22 years as well. It would be nice to know how many people had the abatement and have gone on to pay taxes on their property. I don't know how long it would take to research that, though.
I have had, again, I just, I'm just throwing this out. It's not one way or the other. So walking through the Horton Development, there's a fair number of young families there. Not everybody, obviously, but a fair number. And.
Steve, could you repeat that? It broke up on you.
Yeah, I walked through the Horton Development, and there's a fair number of young families there, Bob. It's not, I can't say it's the majority. I can't say how many exactly. But I can tell you, I've talked with probably six of them there, seven maybe. And obviously, their abatement has helped them move into those homes. That's just part of the process as well. Although, back to Melissa's point and some other points that have been made, I've also got a neighborhood where I live that young families are coming back to because it's an affordable home, but abatement is not available. And to your point, they're moving to Indianola because of other factors that they see are important. I know I'm not helping the argument here, but I'm just saying what I'm seeing in my neighborhood, I'm seeing a lot more young families with kids in the park next to where we live. And so we're seeing kids in there every day. We're seeing families there every day. And so it's young families moving into the older neighborhoods because that's affordable for them. But they don't get the advantage of an abatement in those particular cases either. I'm not helping the argument.
Couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I've been pretty back and forth on this, and I think it's safe to say that House File 718 is kind of the thing that's looming over most everything we do right now, right? And I'm in full agreement that we should relook at everything in light of this. The thing I always ask in my head as we're making these decisions on different things is, what decisions are we making today? And what happens if in the next session, or soon sessions, 718 gets altered in some way? By what terminal velocity are we, are we making good changes or stuff that can potentially inhibit us down the road? Right, just as a thought in that. And that goes back to the question, Jackie, I think you posed it, that we have to make a recommendation based on us acknowledging that we have reached our desired level of residential revitalization, right? So that's the decision that we have to make, in my mind, is have we reached it? That's what we have to decide. So other questions that come out of just that thought process is, you know, we talk about new homeowners or homeowners utilizing this, and they get a tax advantage. And maybe in the 20% scenario, which I still have a lot of questions about that. I love your optimism, Jake. I think 20% is probably more realistic in a drop. But what else do those homeowners bring to the town and the economy by attracting those people, right? They're spending money in town. They're generating funds. Other areas are utilizing businesses. So it's not just a black and white property tax question, right? It's how many families do you bring in, and what are the ripples from that? You know, we talked about, brought up like, well, if you remove it and you see a huge drop-off, we could just reinstitute it. I would just say from my personal experience, it's not that simple. Once these developments shut down, it is years to wind them back up. These things take years to incubate and cook. Whether it's anecdotal or not, we've all heard from many developers and home builders that this would be detrimental to them going forward in Indianola. And it's probably a bit of a game of chicken, right? Like, we won't know if they're serious until we repealed it. You know, but that we can only go off of what they're saying, right? We've heard that a lot. I think, going back to some of the, if you don't mind, Jackie, going back to the cities that don't have it. This kind of got touched on earlier. I think the cities that don't have it have a lot of benefits in terminal velocity that we don't. We have some very good things that personally attracted my wife and I to the town, but it's not maybe mass appeal, right? Look at Ankeny and Bondurant and Clive, all these things, big growing areas, right? We have a lot of new amenities. Heck, even Carlisle, like some of these different towns are building new buildings. We're trying to get there. If you go back to the other, those cities that still have it, you know, you see some towns that are probably a little more representative of where we are. I think if I read between the lines, some of these towns recognize that they have to do something to differentiate from some of the other growing towns in the metro. And this is something that they utilize to do that. You know, and I still don't know the answer after sitting here and like, I hear all the discussion. I want to just jump either way. Richardson is not making it easier.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure from my perspective that like, it's not a knee-jerk reaction to what we're dealing with here. Some things are good in making adjustments. You can quickly bring things back if House File 718 adjusts. Other things you can't. This is one that, again, and I brought up Adele as an example earlier. They're still struggling to recover years later from what was done with their aggressive abatement policy. Big ripples, long-term effect, right? You know, and for us, we have what has been historically good growth for us. We potentially have opportunities to overcome some of our challenges to maybe even get to that higher growth rate, if that's what we want. This could still be a catalyst to it. It also might be that we have reached our desired level of residential revitalization, and then we're comfortable with that number sliding. I think it's, I think we'd all have to be very comfortable with the permits dipping a significant amount with growth stopping. Whether that's 20% or 30% or 10%, I don't know. I don't know if we can quantify it. I would say 20 felt realistic more so than not changing at all, or even 10%. I think it's, I think it's good to hear from a lot of citizens. I never get nearly as many calls as Richardson and Melissa. I guess I'm just grumpy. People don't like to call me as much. But I have gotten a few. I know I've also gotten a lot of calls and emails, we all have, from, again, builders, developers, realtors praising the benefits of it. And I just want to make sure that, for me, all I can speak for is me, that thinking big picture here and not just, this would be a potential long, this is not like a, let's try it for a year and see how we do. This is like, let's make a decision, and it's probably a five-year decision. So. Zero answers, but I just want to make sure from, at least me, out loud and verbalize, that that's, it's kind of the filter I'm trying to run this through.
I think to add to that, one thing that we really have to take into consideration is the number of developments that we have in progress at this point in time and how this potentially impacts them. Any kind of slowdown, if that word is correct, to occur, what does that look like for those developers, developers who have money on the line and interest then to pay on the land that's going to be sitting while they, with lots to be developed on?
We do have some that are big national ones. We also have quite a few that are local developers when they're going to end up in doing, growing the city.
So that's a consideration.
If we have a development agreement with somebody, they cannot have a tax abatement as well, if they're getting to funds.
That was going to be one of my points. Thank you for that. As I'm looking at this, we went back to the slide. One of the things that jumped out at me is Carlisle. They have an abatement on renovation and improvements only. The other thing Carlisle has done is, yes, they've done a lot of public improvements, such as their library and City Hall.
And police.
And police. They've renovated existing buildings. I think they've really been a community that's, in my mind, done things very smartly. And while they're smaller than us, they're doing a lot of things right. So I guess that's, those are the nuggets that are rolling around in my head.
To Jackie's point, we have three developments under TIF agreements. You know, those are going to be under those urban renewal agreements that we will still have some housing building. Again, you can't abate those. But you've also got national builders that come into the community and build homes as well, as well as local builders, too. I think one of the things that we have to also remember is that somebody could argue, well, why don't we just do TIF with these projects and things like that? And you also have to remember that if you TIF a residential program, you have to have 30% LMI housing in that particular program as well. And so that, to some developers, is a stopping point. To some, it's not. But that's something that is out there as well, and you have to keep that in mind.
In those developments, each one has a different TIF term. So when those terms are up, then it would fall back to abatement further.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're a little over the crossroads here, so I think we got to kind of figure out what direction we want to give staff.
So some of my thoughts, too, you know, to like Josh's point of like, have we reached, you know, our residential? I'm looking at it big picture, too. I'm thinking schools, right? So we're, you know, we're talking about 6, 6,000, 20,000, whatever the number might be on if there's a drop or not. But we're not talking about our schools either, and the money they're missing out on. And so, you know, you get a house, you get two, three kids, they're going to school, and.
I believe it was amended so they still pay taxes on school. I don't think it's full tax. Pat, do you know on that?
I'm sorry. What was the question you're asking, whether or not they're.
Yeah, I think the tax abatement program, now they have to pay the school taxes still, even if the city abates their property taxes.
Correct. That is correct.
It's fairly recent law.
Okay. Because that's always been a concern I'm hearing from teachers, is their class sizes and their growth and lack of space in the elementary schools. And so, you know, what strain has it put on them? Because growth does put a strain on them, even if it's at a 3% growth rate. So, I mean, I know they have things that they need, they've got to work on from a building standpoint, and spacing and all of that. But what kind of a strain does it put on our schools? Because even if they're getting tax money, they still have butts in seats. And we have to think about all of those things, too.
At some point, our growth is going to force the hand for another elementary school.
Need that's there.
It's already there.
Right, it's already there.
It's there.
It's not. They should be planning for it in the very, very near future, right?
Well, to Josh's point, to a certain extent, with the uncertainty of any economic situation at any period of time, all that wasn't his point. But, you know, how do you make decisions, and understand that they're going to be good decisions five years down the road? You know, I don't know if there's a way you want to modify what we currently have. Of course, then that becomes difficult, and I don't want to get into 15 different scenarios and spend $100,000 in staff time trying to figure out each one of those scenarios. And, but I do wonder if it's a situation where you phase out rather, abatement, rather than immediately get rid of it? I mean, I'm just raising the question, because then it gives you time to, if things fall off the cliff financially and economically, you've got time to go back and change. If they take off and go like gangbusters, then you've also got time to make a change. And I'm just.
Our attorney did say, when I initially reached out several months ago, he said he's never helped anybody end it, but he has helped them change the percentage amounts. So instead of starting at 100, it'll start at a lower amount.
And March 27th is decent ways off.
Yeah.
Can we just do a direction to end it in March 27? And, you know, if you choose to pivot, you still have time away as opposed to trying to pivot into ending it in March of 27, because it goes off like a gangbuster.
That's a good point.
So.
Why was staff? I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
I was just going to say, is there a stated goal as far as what we want that growth to look like? I mean, was there a targeted number we've talked about before? I don't know one. That's why I'm asking.
We sadly have not established those markers for us that I am aware of.
What I would say, Bob, is that we've kind of been building in the 50 neighborhood of homes a year for how many of the past?
Just the past few years.
Past few years. And that's kind of the marker staff went off of. We're currently, we're currently at 51 right now. I will guess that we'll add a few more before the end of the year, maybe another five or 10. But that's kind of what we're seeing right now. And I know that the national builder's running out of lots, or getting close to running out of lots there, so I don't know what's going to happen there. I think that's been driving a lot of it, too.
I'm curious as to why was staff's recommendation to, to end the residential portion of it? What do you guys see in it that maybe we haven't talked about? Or I guess maybe what was your mindset when you were recommending to end the abatement?
Yeah, I think primarily just looking at what the trend seems to be with some of our peer communities, you know, seeing Norwalk ending it recently, Carlisle ending it recently for new home construction, kind of watching that trend within the metro organizations, and then. Kind of watching that trend within the metro organizations and then potentially an opportunity for additional revenue generation as well. And as been stated, there's just a, a number of factors that impact the home building environment that, you know, when you look at the price of materials, price of labor, interest rates, all those sorts of things. It becomes a little bit difficult to isolate the impact that the residential abatement component has in driving our growth here within Indianola. But again, I'd highlight that staff recommendation also includes keeping that abatement for commercial and industrial development to ensure that we continue to be an attractive environment for businesses and talking with our, some of our financial advisors and such. You know, we're set up well to have the commercial industrial abatement as well as TIF. So we've got those good economic development tools that are available.
Before we go down that road, does anybody here want to get rid of commercial industrial abatement?
No.
Bob?
No, no. I think I'm like. Go ahead, Melissa.
No, go ahead, Bob, because I have a different point.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I, I think I'm like all of you though. With this whole package and I just one or the other kind of spin around in my head is what I'm trying to sort through. I think Josh put it real well. My, my question about the commercial though and businesses. And if we think there would be a drop off, are we going to impact that as far as attracting that kind of development? If there's a slowing of our growth as far as an employment base, I don't know. That just hit my head when you, you mentioned that, Steve.
And on that and kind of the point I was going to make, an interesting thing, if you look at our census numbers over the last, I don't know, decade or maybe even more than that. While we've had this consistent build rate, our census numbers haven't gone up all that much. I find interesting. It's people moving within our community and maybe as children grow and move out from their parents, they're staying within the community or people are leaving the community and being replaced by people moving in.
We've been fairly standard. If you go back and look from 50, 50s, not so much, the 1960s, we had a pretty good size growth. 70s was stagnant a little bit, dropped some, but we've been. I want to say, I, I don't have those numbers right off the top of my head, but we've had fairly consistent growth as far as. Population, if I'm not mistaken. It's usually been in that three to 6% range, maybe a little bit more in some years and some decades. So I, I mean.
It hasn't jumped by leaps and bounds.
No, it's not. No, we've always had slow, steady. It's always been kind of a slow, steady growth, which.
Which is what we want.
Yeah, which, which is what we want.
Staff also discussed that if we can focus on bringing in the industrial and commercial using the tax abatements or the TIF programs, that will then drive the need for housing.
Bob, I was just looking at some of those documents you sent over and trying to do math. That's why I asked all of you for help. And this, it says. Yeah, I know. That's why I double checked. It says from 2011 to 2018, when we redid the abatement program and just had the 75,000, we averaged 32 and a half homes a year. With the new program from 2019 to current, which is six and a half years instead of eight, we've jumped to just under 53 homes a year, which is 40% jump. And so. I don't know.
38 or 33?
30, 32 and a half to 52 and 3/4. So I just again wrap my head around all that we're being given. If we're saying we think it might drop 20% and that's 6,000, right, that you're making up. Now, it's not entirely linear, but the previous program, we still had some abatement, was a 40% reduction from what we're enjoying now. So maybe 20% is even optimistic. Maybe it's not. It's hard to know. A lot has changed in the landscape, but it's pretty interesting data to take into account in this of what we would potentially be giving up. By just going from what we have to zero. Again. It's just, just data. I don't know. It's entirely linear, like I said, but it's certainly. Very interesting.
Remind me, Josh, what years were the changes?
So we changed in 2018 to this. It's Bob sent it to all of us. And so from 2019 to current, we've averaged 52.74, you know? The low year being 34, the high year being 65. And the previous eight years before that, we'd average 32.5 with the low being 14 and the high being 47.
That was with the flat 75.
Yep, yep. Now again, there's a lot of things that go into that. I don't think it's purely like. This means this will get this, but I think it's. Interesting being around and involved in home construction and home sales in this town in those years. I know. What a struggle it was at times to develop lots in a cost effective manner. I mean, it's not just the home builders that reap the benefits. The home builders reap the. The downline benefits, but those developers lots are more valuable if they can sell them at a rate that developer or home builders can make money. You've certainly seen a big jump since we've offered a more robust abatement program. I mean, I just, I, I have no problem just putting it out there. I don't like at this moment, the idea of just cold turkey ending it. I worry about what that does for us long term. I'm completely open if there's a way to. Come up with a revised program that shrinks that perceived gap that we have, right? Maybe we don't offer quite as much, but we still offer an incentive to come here. Because while there are things that do attract some people to this community, there's also things that were, are obstacles for us, right? Distance is one. You know, some of our lack of, of growth and different amenities that we have, right? Man, I hear still the most calls I get, I don't get near as many calls as a lot of you, but every time it's about stinking restaurants. Stinking restaurants in this town, stinking restaurants. We only get restaurants with rooftops. Like that's, that is the game. And, and, you know, I don't know, I just.
Specific ones too, right?
Yeah. Melissa, the day you bring like an Olive Garden to this town, I just.
Steakhouse.
I would say Applebee's.
Yeah, just ride out on a float. I just, again, like I know we're all feeling the pressure of House File 718 and I want to make sure that we're. I'll relook at every single thing that makes sense. I just don't think just because you relook at every single thing means you need to take a machete to every single thing. And that's, that's my concern here with this. We have very few differentiators in this market for us to attract home developers, home builders, home buyers. And. Worry that completely removing this differentiator would be problematic long term for us personally.
I would say we're not taking a machete to it. I think a machete would be getting rid of TIF and commercial.
I'm just talking about residential only.
So. I would also say we pretend we care about the budget. And that's been our focus, right Jake? Has been budget, budget, budget. If we really care about the budget, then it's time to do something about the budget. In capturing your tax dollars helps your budget, whether it's $1,000, $6,000, $20,000, $50,000. I look at it is that's just 20,000, 50,000, six or $1,000 less. We have to cut out of that $800,000 deficit that we're still operating on. So we're going to care about the budget. It's time to care about the budget. Otherwise, just stop pretending to care about the budget.
I don't, I don't think it's fair to say that we're pretending to care about the budget. I would say that you're right, every dollar does count, but it's also not entirely linear even in your argument. And we're also the council that just voted to spend how much on a bathroom?
3,000.
$3,000 on a bathroom. And we had a long debate as to whether or not to try to charge to have it cleaned. I don't think any of us are pretending to care about the budget, but it's a, it's a moving target that is not simple. Again, even to the argument of like. Bringing less people, they spend less dollars at the grocery store. They spend less dollars at the gas station. You don't have as many kids going to your daycares, right? Like you pick down the line, right? The, the businesses on the square aren't getting as much. The restaurants aren't getting as much. Like it's not as simple as, as that. It's a little more complex than whether I pretend to care about the budget or I don't. I care very much enough to come here regularly and talk about it and spend a lot of time reading about it otherwise. And so I agree, I think we need to do a lot of things. I just want to make sure that we're doing. The right things. And I'm not even saying don't make an amendment to what we have on the residential side. Saying is there some more thought that has to go into this so that we don't turn the faucet off altogether? Which I think would be detrimental to long term goals personally. But I, I am not just pretending to care. I really do care.
I think the great thing about this is it's just a study session. I mean, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, guys. This was coming and getting information from, from staff and then let's go back and digest it a little bit, right? We've been sitting on, talking about Kaikota for two months, so let's, I mean, let's sit on this for a week or two and let it, let it sink in a little bit, right?
Then you don't have that lapse in coverage on that too. Because.
What?
I don't know what that means. Yeah, because if you would have, you know, canceled that, that's where you'd be at right now. But I think they just want some type of direction. I think, I think they want.
My direction would be let it simmer on it for a week or two and then let's come back and revisit it. I think that's a responsible thing to do.
But we've known it's been coming for months. Like we've known it's been coming.
Okay, I didn't, I don't disagree, but I didn't have this information until.
Thursday.
No, I had it tonight. I'm sorry. I've been working every single night and every single day, so I, I had it tonight. So I would just like to let it simmer a little bit.
Also a lot of good questions that came from the discussion in my notes here that have given me things to think about that I probably hadn't thought about until we came and had discussion.
If I may, just kind of to the point of reflecting on the information, the questions that have been shared. I think it's also important worth noting that from the community's perspective, we have a tremendous asset heading our way in seven days from now, right? We're going to have a community economic development director coming on board, which really this is something that's very firmly in their wheelhouse. So I think there's been a lot of great discussion. I think there's been a lot of great comments. I think having a community economic development director coming on board that's gonna be able to take in this feedback as well as think of their experiences in other metro communities as luck would have it for us. That there'd be valuable insight to be gleaned from having that professional here as well that could add to the conversation.
Another great reason to let it simmer for a little bit.
Is there anything else you need from staff in the meantime?
I was just gonna throw out, can we. Kind of document the different options that we're all thinking about at this point? Or are you guys not comfortable doing that until you've thought about it more?
Hate to waste staff time just, just to, just to talk about it. I, I, I mean, I wrote down what some of, some of the options you had, you had brought up. I, I don't know what modifying it looks like financially.
Just in modifying it, I, I guess in my mind, it would be modifying the scale. Today, it's 180, 60, 40, 20. And we've had different things in the past. I don't know what the scales have been, but I know other communities don't start with 100.
Or even if you start with 100, but at a shorter ramp than five years, right? Like something to your point, I think, like I'd be curious what that math would look like. I don't know that I'm good enough to give staff exactly what to do other than run 100 different scenarios. I don't want to waste their time.
And there are some who skip a year, like you stay at one level for years and then it changes again.
I think we run into the, gotta be careful. I think if we're gonna do something that has some kind of modification, that we be fairly clear on what that modification is. On to Josh's point, I don't want staff spending hundreds of hours literally on trying to figure out every different scenario that's out there. I think if we're gonna, if you're gonna modify it, you need to give them some parameters to consider. And then those are the parameters you look at. I mean, I understand that everything can change a little bit, but. Just to Steve's point, I don't want to spend tax dollars, spend a lot of time on things that we're not even going to discuss. And so I think that's kind of something we need to make sure that we. We take care of.
Would be. Within the realm of reasonable, Jake, if this is something that as our new economic development director comes on board, one of the projects I'm sure they'll be tasked with tackling. Again, to your point earlier of getting insight from him. Maybe he's got some ideas for some other options as part of his take on the presentation. That would be. Options that are other than a 100 or zero, right? I mean, is that to not abuse staff time, but I think that'd be part of his analysis. I would imagine he'd come up with some ideas.
Absolutely. I think that'd be very reasonable. I think, and as we work through that, I think the big crux of the issue will continue to be for us is trying to project what this means in terms of building permits or new single family homes, right? And that's where even the financial analysis, as Councilmember Ray had talked about, you know, for. Our financial advisor said, well, maybe if we cut back from 50 to 40, it's possible if we go back to 2011, then we're back to 32. Our little 30s. So that is where a lot of the challenge, I guess, of the situation comes into play is trying to have an accurate projection of what this may or may not mean for building permits. I was talking to Jackie earlier, it's, you know, there's economists with PhDs that are much smarter than us that, that do this thing and they still do these things and they still get it wrong, right? So certainly we can project and base it off peer communities and the best information that we have available, but there's always going to be that, that bit of unknown in this process of truly what is the impact on the, the future growth.
Just looking at goals and what we're trying to accomplish by making any change. We need to be honest and look at what it is that we want as an end. Obviously to Steve's point, we're. Started this conversation was the budget and how we increase revenue. And so looking at the different options and what the potential budget impact of those are should be one of those components. As we look at different scale options or the number of years that we offer the abatement or always the option of getting rid of it altogether and what that impact is, whether it's, you know, taking our number of building permits per year down by 20% or 30% or 40, whatever that may be. The impact of that is to the budget is something we need to take into consideration as well.
I don't disagree. I do want to emphasize again though, that if we ask them to do 40%, 30%, 20%, 50%, you're dealing a lot of staff time and that is a cost as well. And we do have to keep that in mind. So I, I would just really ask council to really consider. Narrowing that down as we get to that point to make sure that we ask for very specific things and very couple of options or three options. If that's what you want to look at. Because we start getting into wanting to know what this or that or what's this going to do? I understand where, where we're headed. We can't predict that. I mean, the Fed meet, I just looked up when the Fed meets. They meet February, September 17th. Right now is pointing to a rate cut. If that happens, does that mean all of a sudden people are going to go back out and start buying more homes? Does that mean if that happens and whatever the percentage is on that? All of a sudden people are gonna go back out and start buying more homes, does that mean if that happens and whatever the percentage is on that? Um, I mean, you folks work in the commercial, I mean, you work in the, the finance area. I don't know what the projections are, but I think that's gonna help. But then does that mean, and also then you've got to consider all the other factors that go into the economy. Uh, personally, I think there's, things are slowing down and people are spending less money. Um, so that would led, lead me to kind of believe that maybe. It's gonna drop more than you think it is, but then at the same time, there's a group of people out there that do have money and can spend money. And I know I'm, 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 I'm not telling you to go on, and that's part of my point here, but. You have to understand, I think this is more than just whether or not we do. Some of the tax or the abatements or things that we all understand, it's the economy, it's gonna, whatever is gonna happen, but House File seven eighteen doesn't help us either, so. Um, I, I just want to make sure that we don't give staff fifteen scenarios to work on to try to come up with some answers.
Just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting.
No, I, I'm not saying you were.
I was trying to leave us to a point where we could give them a handful of examples. If we're not at that point, then we'll mull it over and.
I like what you're saying, I just don't know that I would have enough information to come up with, like, here's three example scenarios that you could run to. Come with the payment, I would think that. The direction of. If our gap is what we have, six to twenty thousand dollars. Or nothing, whatever, like. What's the difference between the two, find us a scenario that gets there, we're not giving away as much. And then if they even run it at twenty percent, I can do the math on a thirty, forty percent drop. You know what I mean, like, it doesn't need to be all the different scenarios. They just send it over to Excel, I'll just add it in the cell, that's how I do that, I don't have to ask Dolby to do my calculator math for me. I'm a, I'm a formula guy, so I agree with you, Melissa, like, I think we should give direction, I just personally wouldn't know, like. Do seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, like, I wouldn't know, I mean, I would think that. They have some pivot tables and some smart person stuff that can probably come to some good scenarios pretty quickly, that would help accomplish the goal of. Somewhere in the middle.
Then maybe our other option is outlining what our goal is and then they come up with the scenarios to. Meet that goal and those metrics. That's what I'm saying, we need to come up with the. If our, uh, if our objective in all of this is to. Increase revenue by X. Through revising of the abatement program. Then we need them to tell us what, how we can get there. The different options. Whether it's to. Change the. Rate of time and the scale or change how we offer it. Maybe it's not to the entire city, maybe it's a focused.
Yeah, that's what all I was trying to say, like, I don't, I wouldn't know how to do that specifically, but if. Removing it increases us six to twenty thousand dollars depending on your scenario and keeping it is that net zero. Show me your recommendations as the head of this department. On how to have that or what is a better thing that you feel is still incentivizes growth, but. Six to twenty thousand dollar budget deficit, is what I'm saying. I just don't know. I wouldn't know what to say, if it should be a five-year thing, a three-year thing, uh, you should be playing with, I, I don't know, that's where I'm at a loss to tell them how to do it. I'm saying that's what I would like to see and have them give recommendations.
Mayor Council, if I may, um. Usually reinventing the wheel is, is the challenge, so I think one, one of the things we certainly could explore is. As, uh, Jackie pointed out, there's a number of communities who have gotten rid of abatement, there's a number of communities who still have abatement. Uh, one of the items that we would certainly are out, I would, we could look at is of the communities who still have abatement, what models. Are they using and perhaps we could, uh, use that as our basis point to show other communities who are utilizing abatement. Um, how are they utilizing it and we could model out a few of those, uh, different scenarios. And then we could bring you back, um, what those look like, I think would certainly be an option. I do also think, uh, you know, again, uh, appreciate the conversation, I think it's been good, I, I also want to point out the positive in this that. You know, I think we really as a group agreed to hone in on the residential side of things, I didn't hear anyone say that they wanted to continue the discussion on commercial industrial, so I think. Just eliminating that portion of the conversation is a, a big benefit to staff and it kind of hones us in. To certainly explore this in greater detail, um, so I think we can look at some of our peer communities around, uh, the metro and model out, uh. If we were to kind of adopt maybe one of their models, how that would compare to us, um, as mentioned, you will have our Community Economic Development Director starting. Next Monday, there'll, he'll certainly be, uh, an asset and I would also, um, potentially like to ask him, you know, and, and, and guide us a little bit on. You know, if we should also try to factor in, um, considerations of what this may mean in terms of, uh, sales tax or other revenue sources if we. Uh, decrease our permits, because if we do have less people in town, there is certainly, uh, consideration there, so I think it's kind of what I'm, I'm gathering.
I'd say you're right on that, I just also just want to caution the group here too that we, we can't. Always just assume that abatement's gonna drive. Development or, or stop development, it's, it's so many other factors out there. I mean, we can do all of the modeling we want to and if the economy. Busts loose and takes off, then that, you know, that it, it. It wasn't because of the abatement, if, if the economy goes in the tank, it's not because of abatement, it's a lot of other factors too, but. I think to everybody's point, we just need to make sure that we've got the best data available to show how much money we're trying to, trying to save or not save. And trying to find a common ground here between everybody, I think this is a good discussion, I know that. Um, I know there's some of you that are just wanting to completely get rid of it, I understand that, but at the same time, I do believe that. Somewhere along the line as a group, we have to start coming together on a lot of different decisions and so sometimes, sometimes. Finding compromise is not a bad thing, and so. Whatever we end up with, we end up with, I know that Christina texted me and said she was against tax abatement and, and getting in dropping that, just an FYI. So. If you've got some direction of where you need to go. Where I'm hearing.
She's against abatement and dropping it?
No, she wants to drop.
She wants to drop.
So what's the last part here where you were looking for what, Steve? I'll make sure that they've got directions, what we're looking for. And what, what'd you take off, what have you guys folks, kind of recap where you're at with, with this then?
Yeah, so the, the things that I'm hearing is that, uh, we'll take commercial industrial off the table, so we'll hone in on the residential side of things. We'll look at some of our peer communities who still have abatement in the metro and we will, uh, model a few of those different options that we think may best fit. Uh, or be worth considering at least here at Indianola and what that would do to the budget, um, uh, off of that alone with some different. Uh, permit level projections incorporated in there, and then we'll also, um, see if we can kind of wait, find a way to maybe work in a little bit of a consideration towards the impact of. Uh, sales tax or other revenues if, uh, we were to see some dip in permit activity.
Okay, next question then is do we want to bring this to another study session in October? Uh, and have that final discussion where we're gonna make a recommendation on one way or the other, is that what we want to do? Because I think there's still a lot of discussion to be had, but that's just my thinking from what I've heard here so far.
When's the next study session?
October. Second Monday in October.
I don't know, will that give?
I, yeah, I would, I'd be a little concerned about the timeline on that, just with, uh, Bray starting a week from now. That would really only give staff about two weeks to model of different scenarios and pull the data together.
What's your suggestion then? I'd like to come out here with an idea, when we want to talk about it again if we can.
I would say at least, uh, the November study session, um, that time or the time thereafter, I think would be acceptable.
Counsel.
I would say November then. We go too far then. Yeah, thoughts get lost.
Okay. So if we discuss it in November, it wouldn't be on a agenda item until December, right?
For second, well, at least, at least the second meeting in November. You could theoretically have it.
You could, okay, alright.
Depends on where, if we end up with a decision, if we can come to a consensus.
Um, if I may, Jackie, is the abatement, is that a policy or is that an ordinance?
The urban revitalization area is an ordinance.
Would be challenging, cause if we have this discussion on Monday, our next meeting would be the following Monday and we'd have to get legal to have. Ordinance drafted and turned around, essentially in a matter of two days to get it out in the packet, make sure we write a memo and all that good stuff to go with it. Not saying it's impossible, but, um, that'd be a pretty quick turnaround.
So you're looking at probably December then?
Probably the first meeting in December would be a more likely target.
I'm gonna make a different suggestion. Would it make sense to just wait? I mean, if you're doing an ordinance change at the end of the year, that's gonna trickle into January.
I think you still have plenty of time.
I don't know who's sitting here.
We would know by then though, who would be, December.
You're just saying potentially.
It could flip either way, right?
I, I hear what you're saying. Also then, the challenge is like, how many things do we just end up rolling until after an election? You know, we're all still here for the terms that we're elected to to do.
Or just have Jake turn it around in two days?
I like your optimism, I'll be aboard tonight, Jake.
And the conversation has already began with this group.
Yeah, I know, but if you get into a third reading in January, depending on who's sitting here and you pass something, I could tell you to go for like eight, right? I'm just saying, like, I don't know, I mean, you know, we should know who's sitting here. I don't, you know, if there's anybody new, I don't know how you figure out what they want to do. That's, that's the tough part. Then you gotta do three readings, right? I would just hate for something, whatever it is, to just like fail like January like fifth or whatever that Monday is. That's all I'm saying, I mean, if we want to go, I mean, we can go for it, right? Whatever we do.
What if we, uh. What if we move that September, October study session to the third Monday instead of the.
Third Monday is when we have our council meetings.
Okay, fourth.
You say, let, we can just let staff continue on, do this and we can deal with that part later if we need to.
Forward a week or two weeks actually. Yeah, 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 I'm just trying to move it forward, so, to address Steve's concern.
That was that, Jackie, we all talked over you.
No, I said, I think we can, my advice would be just to let staff go ahead and explore the possibilities and bring them back to you and then make a decision at that point. Instead of worrying about it now.
We'll all have faith in Jake's ability to turn around legal.
Okay, anything, uh, we got what we need here then, so I will call us adjourned then, so.